This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I will do just a quick roll call. We do have four of them. Supervisor Walsh is here, Supervisor Tinkle, Supervisor Banks. Yeah. So we have three out of the five present today. Can I have a motion to approve the final agenda? Because we don't have any walk-ons.
Do you want to bring Guy in first?
Bill.
Oh, is Bill on?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, we need a forum for the room, sorry. I need a motion to approve for special privileges under special circumstances Supervisor Guy.
I'll make that motion.
Say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect, thank you. So we don't have any additional walk-on items, everything we have is as-is. So if I can just get a motion to approve the final agenda for today.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we will run into public comment.
I have a Mike Kelly regarding a non-agenda item.
Hey Mike, good to see you.
Hey Doug, good afternoon. Yeah, there's several requests, but I want to start with a quick story and not going to take a lot of time, but around about 2014, I brought my son out to the fields and we're going to do a workout. And so I noticed this high school kids working out really hard. And so I asked him, got in a conversation with him, I said, what are you training for? And he says, well, I'm hoping to get picked up by college. And I said, well, who's looking for you or who's looking at you? And he said, really, nobody right now, I'm not on the radar with anybody. So I hooked him up with a trainer and so forth and long story short, two years later, he's graduating from Juco, going to UNLV, college, two years after that, I see him on TV playing for the Cleveland Browns. Really cool story. But my request is that we we get these fields fixed a little quicker in the summertime so that kind of stuff can happen because years ago, I was used to seeing like NFL athletes out there training, tons of college athletes and so forth. So, and I'm out there probably when I can, two, three times a week. And there's no reason why these things couldn't be fixed a little bit sooner in the summertime for all these athletes to be training here. Even though, even though they don't live here, I think it's it's such a huge benefit to all our community to to get this thing fixed and in order that I don't see any reason why we couldn't within a month's time. And most of the damage is usually done because of the soccer goals and, you know, sliding back and forth between the goalies. So that that's my request is that we get the fields back in order a little quicker in the summertime so that the athletes can train for what they need to in the fall. And selfishly, I like to go out there and run myself too. So to come out here and see all these signs up saying that you can't work out or what have you for three months, it seems a little excessive that we're paying the taxes on this place and we can't use it when it, when I think it could be open a little bit more. That's what I have for today, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
All right. Next, we have Charles.
Oh.
Ketsamon, thank you, Charles.
I even have trouble as I was going. Thank you, thanks all for allowing me to speak here today. I'm 10854 Ponderance Drive. And I was just wanting to get an update on Lake 125. I mean, we've had repairs done to it and they failed miserably and very quickly. I see that there are lakes within our community that are, you know, being pushed back, pushed forward. And I think we're at a point on that particular lake that some of the homeowners houses could be threatened. I mean, you can tell me about engineering reports and stuff, but, you know, just visibly, let's, let's have a discussion. I would like to invite y'all to my home and walk around the lake. And I'm just asking for some information.
His, his is the one that we went out. Yeah. Is the one we went out, thought we could do it. A point repair and not doing it the right way. And the first time you, we got a rain, it slapped off on both sides of the pond down end.
When did we do that?
About four months ago.
Yes.
What needs to be done is as soon as the water, right now, to answer your question, I live over there in Gateway Greens, as you know. Nothing can be done right now because water level's up so high. But as soon as the water level gets back down, we need to go back in and essentially get those banks back into the 41 slope and put some fabric in there to hold them because they aren't going to hold. The other side didn't hold and the other side over on Cypress Links didn't hold either.
Yes, sir.
But we got to wait till the water goes down.
So I've witnessed the lake management bank often. I would ask that y'all oversee what they are doing. Their practices are terrible. They're using an aquatic, basically roundup. They are killing our grass. So once you kill the grass, guess what happens? There's no root system to hold, structurally hold the bank. And I've been seeing this go on for years and years. So I stopped a guy and asked him, he was actually doing the correcting. He was actually spraying the grasses in the lake. But you know, who knows? I know with COVID and everything else that, you know, it's hard to find, you know, good workers, people tend to cut corners. And I feel like Lake 125 has totally been just pushed to the wayside due to location. You know, I see that Lake 128, which is on the golf course, you know, I really don't care about the golf course. Doesn't need to be done. I live near it. I really want to see some action taken on 125. And like I said, it's not about me, it's about a few residents who are in trouble.
When they're spraying, are they on the four-wheelers or are they walking?
Yes, they're in the carts, yes, sir.
The carts.
Yes, sir.
And he's, because they typically, they stay up in the LME.
Yes, sir.
But where you're at and on the other side, they can't get in there or otherwise that cart will go right down in the lake.
I don't have a problem with the cart. It's the actual spraying.
Well, what I was getting to is if the cart is usually in the LME, the lake management easel, when he sprays, he hits the water. But if they're farther up the bank because they can't get closer, you can have some of that water or that chemical that's in there.
I understand.
Dripping and it'll kill the grass.
No, I'm talking, I'm not talking just like a little accident. I'm talking a two-foot barrier.
Yeah.
I, I, I understand turf. I used to work at JetBlue, you know, so I know all about turf management. And what I've seen, they're spraying the wrong chemicals, number one, okay? And they're not being supervised correctly. I know we pay good money because I've seen bills. I've actually had to AquaGenics. They oversaw our lakes at JetBlue Park. And I don't know who we have right now, but it's just something to maybe think about moving forward to all of our lakes because I know this is a huge, mongous part of this bond issue that a lot of people are against and I'm against. But let's just take a step back and try to manage these things a lot better.
Just to correct one thing, the, the bond issue won't cover that because that's an operating cost.
Okay.
The bond is for capital cost. But the operating cost, you are right, we are spending one heck of a lot of money. A lot of money. And it does need, I totally agree with you, and it's been that way for a long time, it needs to be supervised.
So the, the good news is we're, we're aware of 125 and you do have someone that does represent the community, so I understand. So we are currently reevaluating 125 or we need to put it on?
Not yet. We haven't done anything with it yet until the water level goes down.
So in order to, to truly evaluate, we've got to wait for the water levels to, to go down.
Well, what we need to do is to put 125 back on the list as a top priority project and do it the way we've done the other ones with the stone and/or the fabric. It, it's an extreme slope on both sides of the lake.
That's what I was going to ask, what was it that failed?
The banks, banks.
It was just banks?
It's erosion coming in and when they compacted the soil and then put the sod back, it escaped right.
And then once that hard rain comes through, it just washed out.
Washed right back.
So Chelsea, can we just put 125 on the list for, for us to circle back and reevaluate?
We'll get eyes on it and then we'll add it to.
It's because it's two issues, the spring, it's not that, that vendor. It has happened, I have seen it when it's windy. So what he's talking about to me sounds like one is windy.
Yeah, we.
Because then it's all the way around, like the two.
Yeah.
It's usually don't spray it, but when it's something that we.
So we need just to review protocol on how we're spraying and ensure that we're not spraying where we're not supposed to. If that requires us, the, the vendor to get out of the cart and hand spray in those areas where the, the LME or the escarpment is, is pretty severe, let's just, and maybe if we can have someone from staff kind of log those.
We'll, we'll get eyes on the damage and then also reach back out to Charles with follow-up. Got his contact information.
Thank y'all so much and one last item. You know, I don't really, I don't want the rock. And a lot of our residents don't want the rock. You know, if there's a better way to shore this thing up, we would be happy to explore all those options with y'all. I'm more of a vegetative guy. I think rocks or, you know, it's either riprap or I'd rather go with some type of vegetation in order to save money so we can move on to the next lake that needs proper attention.
Okay. Thank you very much for your input, we appreciate it. Chelsea, who do we have next?
I don't have any other that signed up and I don't see that anybody requested through the go-to.
Okay, perfect. So we're going to move on to item six, recognition. We have anything for that or?
This is new. It gives you all the opportunity to recognize any special achievements of anybody in the community or any other outside agencies or staff.
Okay. All right. So that's a placeholder, no, no items for that.
Are you going to be looking for us to send this information to prior to the agenda?
No, this would just be the time where Doug, you would go through to each board member and say, do you have any, any items?
Okay, so none for today. So moving forward, board, if we do have recognition opportunities for, like to what Chelsea said, vendors, members of the community, staff, this is the time for us to, and I like the idea of having it in place. Advisory committee items, do we have any specific reports for today?
We did not receive any from SBAC or P-PAC.
Okay, perfect. Just need approval of the minutes in item eight A.
I think we had two meetings.
Yeah.
You want them both at the same time?
Yeah, yeah, I'll do them both at the same time, eight four and eight eighteen.
I didn't have anything.
Nothing, okay. So motion to approve.
Make the motion to approve the minutes.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Three, four, zero. We don't have any agenda items, so we'll move on to staff reports. I think we just have district engineer today.
Yes, but I believe his items are for the resolutions.
Okay. So Fred can just speak to those when we get up. So we'll move on to administrative agenda. Eleven A, resolution 202229, declaring assessment and providing for an amended and restated engineers report dated September 1st, 2022 and the amended and restated assessment methodology report dated September 1st, 2022.
Chelsea, do you want me to introduce that or Rhonda?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I just got in now finally. Yes, if you recall, members of the board, at the workshop of August 24th, there was a substantial discussion, detailed conference of discussion with regard to the engineers report, the scope of the capital improvement project and how the team went back and revised and the engineer revised. And we now have an amended and restated engineers report prepared by Tetra Tech. And after that, the Russ Wire as the assessment methodology consultant prepared a revised assessment methodology report, the amended and restated assessment methodology report. It should be in your agenda packet, both dated as of September 1st, 2022. And if you wish to, perhaps have Fred and if Russ is available, make a presentation outlining the changes between the prior report, today's report for the benefit of the board and the benefit of the public. And after the board has heard from public comment and if Rhonda's on the phone, if she wants to also mention anything or Chelsea also and Laura, then the board would be appropriate to adopt this resolution. And what this also does, it repeals the prior resolution that repealed the first prior resolution. So basically, we're, we are now in the posture of having a new engineers report, the amended and restated engineers report on September 1st is what the staff is recommending.
Yeah, I agree, the engineers report needs to go first.
I apologize.
Engineers report needs to go first so that Fred can outline the changes.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. If Fred needs to make his presentation, I, and I suggest that he outline to the board that the changes between the prior report and today's report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Fred Mittel with Tetra Tech, I'm the engineer of record for the bond report, the amended, restated master's engineers report. Tony started, gave me a bit of an introduction. Since the previously presented report, we've revised the engineers report. And that came out of public, those changes were born out of comments from the public primarily. And staff got together, the board, and I was present last week, we had a workshop. And we went through line item by line item in the, in the 10-year capital improvement plan and looked at where we could refine it. And there's a number of, of items in that capital improvement program, but I'll, I'll highlight a few that, that's changed. But first I'll mention the, the previously in the report that Tetra Tech prepared, the 10-year CIP was $58,640,000. And the current report that I'm presenting today, that's a synopsis of, is at $45,300,000, a decrease of $13,340,000. Couple items were taken out of the CIP. One was the bond engineering and legal costs, which are actually included in the cost of issuance. And there was an item on maintenance item was mentioned earlier to the gentleman. We, we took out an item that was really a maintenance and not a capital improvement. That, that reduced it by $1.3 million. A lot of items were decreased in the budget in the CIP. Some of the more significant ones, I'm looking here at the summary. The lake bank restoration decreased by $16.3 million. Street lighting went up in our, that's the most new information that came in. And, and this is, so that went up by over 5 million, but that's a conceptual, it'll depend on what happens conceptually with whether the district purchases those, that lighting, then that is yet to be determined. Master irrigation renovation that was added back into the CIP, it was in during draft stages, but it's now in the CIP at a cost of 2.2 million. That, that's for the system in the common areas to irrigate the lawns, the green space, upgrades to that system, maintenance. The great, the Gateway Commons park improvements, that, that was decreased by nearly $4 million. Those are some of the larger items. So the, in, in, in summary, like I said, the, the net change was $13.34 million decrease. And I'm here to address any questions you might have.
And Frigga, so go ahead, Bobby.
I just have one follow-up on the, on the irrigation. Did we get clarification if that amount, it's to just repair the existing or would it be just the new pipes? Remember we talked about at the workshop? Was that amount to just change the heads and, and, and adjust the pipes or to redo the whole thing? We're waiting on.
It was just, that price was just the heads and the controllers.
Controllers and heads.
Yes.
So no piping?
Correct. It would have been a guess. Nobody knows what we're going to run.
Because we don't have the landscaping plans. I just want to make sure, like, because it's really combined, so residents know we're still, we're going to get up to date on controllers and heads, but not on the whole entire system because we need the landscaping plans to know what our needs are. I just want to make sure they understand why we cannot do a whole irrigation because the $170,000 is not there for the landscaping. I just want to make sure, okay.
Yeah, I think, I think the purpose of the exercise for, for everyone that's listening or who'll watch this at a later time is, you know, this plan is, is organic, it'll stay in motion. We will revise it, we will review it, we will enhance it. You know, the, some of the pricing structures could, could go up slightly, some could go down slightly or even significantly, or they could fall off altogether. So we tried to do this latest round, we tried to do our due diligence based on updated information, what we know now. And we do have these in, in series, so they're in about three-year blocks when you look at the, the plan for execution. So there are some items that we might not even get to for two, three years, four, five years out. So prices will probably shift during that time, hopefully favorably if at all possible. So this gives us a starting point, gets us through the bond validation. But all these items still have to go back through the board, they still have to be approved. And there will be opportunities for additional, let's say, insight from the, from the, from the residents as well as your, your input. So this is really just the phase one. Anything in addition?
No.
Yeah.
Tony, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm trying not to be part of the action on the interstate.
Tony, correct me, I, I think, I think I heard you correctly, we're going to, you want to split these? Or we're still looking for approval for the, the resolution as a whole that includes the engineering report and the assessment methodology?
Yeah, let me, let me look at the resolution as I'm sort of stuck in traffic here.
It is one resolution.
The resolution references, the resolution references both the amended, the engineers report is exhibit A and the amended master assessment methodology is exhibit B. So I would, I'd suggest that the board also hear a presentation by Russ Wire and then I'll ask if there's any public. Has anybody signed up to speak on this, Chelsea?
Nobody has signed up to speak and I don't think Russ is on the line.
Yeah, and what I would say for, for the assessment methodology piece, the reason why this has to be, the reason why this has to be restated is the fact if the, the engineers report, any adjustments there, cost changes, it impacts the assessment, not the methodology, but it, it, it impacts the, the output is, is the.
I, I think the big thing was is if Russ is not here, the, the big item is the $1,016 was in the last report that we had approved has now gone down to $719.
Correct.
Now all of the.
Well, I think additionally, if I may, additionally, I'm not, and I can't recall because I was trying not to get run over by a semi, I can't recall if Fred mentioned that and also part of the engineers report, it broke in, it broke out for the discussion of certain infrastructure for the gateway area and the Pelican Preserve area. And I think that's another larger component or another component of Russ's analysis and assessment methodology.
Yeah.
So Tony, this is, this is Rhonda Mossing with MBS Capital Markets. And in Russ's absence, I might be able to summarize his assessment methodology report for the board if, if you'd like.
Sure, yeah, if you want to just give us a high-level summary, that'd be great.
So based upon the revised engineers report and the revised costs, Russ went through and did an analysis and determined that the gateway assessment area would benefit from the improvements by $42,89,050. The Pelican Preserve assessment area would be $1,063,350. And the Utility Enterprise Fund would benefit by 2,000, I'm sorry, $2,147,600. And those numbers totaled the $45,300,000 of total CIP costs over the 10-year period in Fred's report. Then from there, we did a bond sizing. And when we did the bond sizing to revise it down from the $74,500,000 that was previously being considered, we assumed that the Utility Enterprise Fund would pay cash for their improvements and that the gateway assessment area, their portion of the, of the bond issue would be $53,560,000. And Pelican Preserve, if they chose to finance with bonds, would be $1,360,000 for a total bond sizing of $54,920,000. And just to remind the board, the difference between that and the total amount of the improvements are the necessary reserve funds that need to be funded, capitalized interest and costs of issuance. So we then revised the resolution for the bond validation based upon a total bond sizing of $54,920,000. We, we rounded that to $55 million. And that's what you'll see in the bond validation resolution. So I, I think that summarizes for the board what the methodology.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And again, just as a reminder, the reduction of the 1,016 to the 719, what that means is if we were to spend every dollar that we are putting in the bond validation, it would impact residents at that amount, 719. Now, this is 20-year debt financing, these projects will not happen all at once, they will happen over a 10-year period. So what the residents can expect, I can't give you a number, but it would be increments of that 719 over, over the 10-year period. And again, we're trying to do, we're trying to plan them in blocks of three years. So if you were to take that amount and split it over 10 years, probably sort of maybe six, six to seven, that could give you an idea how much it might impact. So probably, I mean, I don't want to even estimate, but it'll, it'll be partial amounts of that 719 over a 10-year period. That makes sense. And I think that's, I want to make that clear because when you look at the sheer volume of the amount that we have in this bond, it is significant. And when people see that amount of money, it, I mean, it's sticker shock. And I think, you know, it's completely understandable. But when you start to break it down and understand how it would impact you over, over, you know, 10-year period, you know, we're talking, you know, anywhere from $30, $50, you know, $60 annually, just a hypothetical and.
Well, less than that, the first, I mean, to look at it, not even a million the first year, 2023.
Yeah, so we're talking, you know, it could be a very small amount.
It's a very small amount the first three years.
And keep in mind too, this, this does not impact the approved assessment that, or the assessment that we approved at the last meeting or meeting before last at all. This does not impact your 2023. If at all, the first opportunity for this to, to hit the residents would be in 2024 and then 2025 and so on. So any additional discussion on this item before we move for approval? Okay, then I get a motion to approve resolution 2022-29, declaring assessment and providing for the amended and restated engineers report dated September 1st, 2022 and the amended and restated assessment methodology report dated September 1st, 2022.
Are we going to do requests for public comments before a discussion point or? Tony, do you want to?
I think we already requested.
We've already requested, nobody, nobody spoke?
No public comment.
Sorry about that, I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's a four, zero unanimous, thank you. And the Gann, the Gannicus board book is?
The Gannicus.
Gannicus, is it different than the printout? So just, do I need to stick to a certain order, does it matter?
This is.
We have to set that public hearing next time.
The next, on Doug up here's, there was an issue between the packet and the agenda.
Okay, yeah, no problem, I just want to make sure we're, there was the right order of operation, so.
This 30 is next, 22-30.
So we will move now to resolution 2022-30, setting a public hearing on the proposed special assessment for the capital improvement project. And that date is?
October 6.
October 6.
Yeah.
At?
At five. Yeah, and, and Mr., members of the board, the, and as I'm driving, like I said, I've noticed the, since the district moved its administrative office to the Fairway Lakes Drive, Suite 1, and their resolution 2022-30, I thought reflected that specific reference as opposed to when people send their comments in, they'll send them into the administrative office. And it also clarified that the meeting on October 6th will be in the board meeting room at 13240 Griffin Drive. So when the board gets to the point where it's going to adopt their 2022-30 resolution, make sure we have the, the correct first few pages that reflect the, the address, the district administrative office and its reference and that the meeting will be in the board meeting room at 13240 Griffin Drive.
It says that, Tony.
Yeah, so we're.
Okay, the one I'm looking at, the agenda packet that I pulled up online, doesn't say that.
Which one clarifies it that it is the sixth, that it is here at this location?
Oh, but we, I was specifically mentioning board meeting room, but anyway, I'll, I'll work with Chelsea and on that. So to the extent that those Scrivener items need to be addressed, because we, the district office is defined as a 13240 address, whereas the district administrative office is what we're advertising and noticing for comments. And that's the Fairway Lakes Drive space.
Yeah, we're in good shape. Yeah, we're in good shape.
Okay.
It's uh, we have 5 o'clock.
Says 5 o'clock here.
Okay, I, you said 6, I, I make sure it was 5.
5 o'clock. It's on October 6th at 5:00 P.M.
Aye.
That was fast.
He said aye.
He said aye.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And, and again, Chelsea, Laura, no one will sign up to speak on that item.
I don't have any sign, anybody who signed up to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item, let me get around the roundabout here without running into the uh, oops, person in front of me, who decided to slam other brakes and stop as opposed to going into a roundabout. Anyways, I'm gonna put my business cards here. The uh, next resolution is because we are changing the amount to be validated, and the amount is $55,000,000 now, as opposed to before, the amount was uh, $80,000,000. So the request is to uh, adopt the resolution 2022-31, and that repeals the prior resolution 2022-14. It authorizes the issuance of the 1655 million dollars aggregate principal amount of Gateway Services Community Development District Special Assessment Bonds. Uh, also authorizes the filing of the validation complaint, also authorizes and approves the form of the Master Trust Indenture and supplemental trust indentures. And uh, if board has any questions, it's ready and recommended by staff for approval. Rhonda, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I don't.
Thank you.
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve uh, resolution 2022-31.
And I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah. All right, so going through the list, we will go uh, to 11D, Capital Reserve Study Proposal.
So as uh, Chelsea Riley, District Manager, as part of the um, this current fiscal year's budget, uh, the board put roughly $50,000 in for capital improvements, uh, or the capital budget for a capital reserve study, a general fund. We received, reached out and got a couple proposals. The item to, um, the lowest amount is the $14,500. This is the same company that did the 2010 report that I, that I emailed to you all, which seems like they did a lot of the legwork in 2010, although there would be some updated. But uh, this is the low bid uh, response that we received.
Questions?
Yeah.
I went through that 2010 report one more time today, and I just want to get a clarification. The 2010 report was on the OO1 account plus Pelican plus Stony Brook.
That's the way it appeared.
We're only doing OO1 now.
Correct.
Okay. Because I know Pelicans had a study, uh, and they seem to be pleased that I looked at it, it was pretty good.
Yeah.
I don't know that Stony Brook's done anything. They may want to do something on their own, but this one is just for OO1.
Correct. This um, I just, so if approved, uh, like I mentioned to you at a previous meeting, uh, a lot of these companies are, are swamped, and so this would not occur until next calendar year.
So this would be the 2023?
Yes.
Okay. But we need to get on there.
Not on the schedule, not our calendar year, but the physical calendar year.
After the first of the year.
After the first year. I'm very pleased with the, the selection. I'm glad they came in because I think they know what they're doing.
Yeah.
And to, to give you a little bit of history, I did reach out to uh, Russ and Infomark and asked, you know, who, who they utilize. And this is one of the firms that they, they, they utilized before in the past.
The one firm had a lot of credentials, but it was predominantly HOAs. And the assets that we have are totally different.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think the plus here, I'm sure there's probably several, I mean, probably everyone on this list is capable. I think in fact, there's, there's historical effort that's been done. We, it appears to be done, you know, pretty well based on
That was very detailed.
On what the scope was at that time. The one question to your-
What'd you say? Oh, oh, capital reserves.
Their uh, reserve advisors. Re- regarding this, the Pelican and Stony Brook's scope, uh, from a Stony Brook perspective, it would, we would still have anything that might fall within the district's purview.
Some small items, yeah.
Yeah, so-
Yeah, yeah, the OO1 stuff that's-
But we're not, but we're not extending it outside of anything that doesn't have direct-
No, it's just this OO1 stuff that is in those two communities, yes, that's right.
They'll be on Stony Brook to try to reach out and get it all done because they're gonna be there.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, Warren, just as maybe a takeaway, um, I know that this isn't budgeted uh, within uh, Stony Brook's, but you may just want to let the board know that we are engaging in a firm that will, that's gonna conduct uh, this reserve study sometime in 2023, might be beneficial from a cost perspective, or even just a level of effort if Stony Brook wanted, you know, to do something, to, to jump in and piggyback off.
Doug, Doug, can you, can you, this is Phil Maisy.
Yes, Phil.
Do you want to let him speak on this item?
Do you want to?
And we, uh, the advisory committee is going to recommend that we do a capital reserve study as well. As a matter of fact, it's on the agenda for our, for our next meeting. We're gonna ask the staff to, to find somebody to do a capital reserve study for it. Well, the last one we did was four or five years ago. We definitely need a new one, and we want to do one.
Okay, so why don't you, Phil, why don't you get with staff?
These guys are really gonna be busy, yeah.
And uh, and maybe just look at scope.
Yep.
Because we, you know, might be able to, you know, get you guys a little bit ahead of that. And if, 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 if we're picking someone today, which we are, it might be in your best interest as well to, to align that if you don't have any, any, any issues. And if you don't have that, so can we make sure that Phil gets a copy of that 2010?
Yes.
The capital reserve, so he can at least take a look at it and see what they did cover within Pelican at that particular time?
Yes.
The, the other one that I want to do, and I know it's not appropriate right now, but we've got to do the same thing on the enterprise fund. So want to make sure that these guys are up to speed and they don't go from our job to another one and leave us hanging that we don't have the capital reserve for the enterprise to fund.
Well, and if the board is interested in us pursuing that, then we'll need direction.
Yeah.
Do you want to go after quotes and then come back to us, and then we'll give you direction on the next meeting?
Well, maybe, okay, now, could we, would that, Tony, would that fall under expanded scope? So if we, okay, uh, why don't we just follow it with, with Tony to see if that would be covered as something we would have to bid out again? Or um, if we could potentially expand?
It would be a separate contract.
It would be a separate contract, but it would be an addition of scope.
Is the board interested in us pursuing quotes or proposals for the enterprise fund? Okay. We will, we will follow up and get quotes for the enterprise fund and bring that back at a future meeting.
Perfect. And again, I don't know if we would do those, because we, we don't have that budgeted necessarily. But if what we have budgeted falls under what we currently are looking at, we could do votes for that same amount, and we would just expand the scope from our, from what we have budgeted.
Well, we'll come back with proposals.
All right, uh, so do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion to approve to go with advisory, uh, reserve advisory.
Yeah.
I'll second that motion.
As the, do you want to throw your?
The most responsible, reliable.
Lowest responsive, competent, qualified bid and proposal most advantageous to the district.
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
This is actually what I'm saying.
Clean off the needle.
So, I have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
So, uh, hold on, please, please come speak out of mic, so that way we can get you recorded.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mike.
I guess, with that reserve fund, I guess I'd have a question with, when I looked at the budget and we were running in a deficit for a number of different communities, it seemed like, how are we gonna raise a reserve fund, number one, and then how would that be managed?
We're not, I'm not aware we're running in a deficit anywhere.
Okay.
I think you're talking about HOAs.
This is not HOA, this is-
Yeah, no.
Your HOA is mine, but we're not.
Okay.
No.
Yeah, that's, that's what I saw.
With an HOA, it's real easy. You raise the assessment.
So this is a reserve fund for?
The CDB.
The CDB.
This is, this is a study, this is a study to tell us, are we aligned, what are the deficit, we haven't even got to that, but I can tell you it's probably gonna be a deficit.
Okay.
Professional tells us what we should be doing.
Yeah.
Okay. And then how would that money be managed?
Well, we'd have to get there first.
A reserve fund has to be, reserves has to be separated from operating costs, so it'll be in a totally separate fund.
And it's, there's parameters on what you can, what you can do.
An increase to the residents because they're gonna have to pay for it, for others, that's, I think that's your question, right? How are you gonna get that money? Is that what you're asking?
Um, no, not necessarily. What would it be invested in?
Well, we won't know until we get the report and they tell us what.
So this is really the first step in that process to understand what we may need for reserves in the future. Are we, you know, are we doing what we need to do today? This just gives us the guide, the guidelines. So, okay, here's what, based on the study, this is what you should be doing, are you doing it? And then if not, we make adjustments and-
And to help, they look at all of our general fund assets, our capital assets, and say, okay, this has a shelf life of X, and you should be saving this amount, amount of money to either repair or replace it in a certain timeframe. So that'll set us a guideline and a guidebook on how our reserves should be set up.
So to your earlier point, when you were talking about district assets, let's say like the fields and, you know, that, that type of stuff. That's what they would be looking at, you know, let's say the lights have a shelf life of 20 years, you know?
Right.
When, when is that shelf life gonna end, and when should we be planning to replace them? So that's just an example that I know hits close to home to you, because it's part of what your public, your first comment was about is how do we maintain a standard of maintenance so we don't have to shut things down for a long period of time, we stay on top of it? And how is it funded?
Or a special assessment.
Or a special assessment, yeah, absolutely. So, thanks, Mike.
All right.
So there's no more further discussion, I will call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 4-0.
Mike, note that that uh, got over a hurdle that we've been trying to jump for at least 10 years. So, thanks.
And it does get to the point of, we, we did pull capital reserve uh, funding for this year in order to bring the assessment down. Yeah, two digits, so.
We also reduced.
Yeah.
As well.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Uh, so we will move on. You want to go to, what I have is 11E, the, the Pelican Preserve Access Road Contract?
So this item is to approve uh, the proposal from Payment Maintenance LLC in the amount of $287,481.50 and authorize the district manager to execute the contract documents. We have received all of the permits. We are waiting on FPL to enter into an agreement with them to get their blessing to construct this. But by awarding this uh, vendor, we can, they can begin the right-of-way permitting process and start to queue up and acquire any materials and get on their schedule. That way, when we get the FPL agreement, we can flip the switch and we can get the work done. Tony has a-
No, also, we should today have delivered to the district offices the deeds from WCI Lennar for all of the FPL Eastern properties, you know, South, North, and then New North, which includes this area.
Yes.
As well as Stephen Adamczyk for uh, the Pelican Reserve folks are trying to get the product deed executed and delivered also. And under Florida law, delivery constitutes title, recording is a notice matter, so then we're in the ownership of all the necessary property.
So the, the letter of recommendation uh, came from the engineer of record from Rick Berlansky from Homantas to award to this vendor.
Just a quick question. Now, remind me again, uh, what, what's the design to restrict flow for that?
There will be two gates.
It will be completely, it will be completely fenced in with a gate at each end that only um, emergency vehicles and our vehicles, it'll be transponder, not a pin code, so that way the code can't get leaked out. And so if somebody needs, obviously there's gonna be override, but they can't, they can't come and go.
So any emergency vehicle-
Emergency.
Emergency or, and utility vehicles, our vehicles and any emergency vehicle will have access to it.
I just couldn't remember what our, what we landed there. So there's no further discussion, uh, motion to approve?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve the award contract to uh, PMC, uh, in the amount of $287,481.50.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's a shame Bob's not here.
Be jumping for joy.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we'll go straight to F?
Jump twice.
Joy left. We'll go to item F, the fencing contract for Pelican Preserve Access Road.
Yep, same thing. So uh, we received two bids for this. This is to approve the contract with Carter Fence in the amount of $100,500, $100,502.50 for the Pelican Reserve Emergency Access Road and authorize the district manager to execute associated contracts.
Who approves?
Motion.
I'll second that, but with discussion on something. I thought I saw in one of the documents what appeared to me to be a punch button uh, let in, and we don't want that. Did I just see something?
There was, that was bid on, but as an alternative, each vendor provided the transponder. Yes, and that's what we're moving for.
We made it very clear that we did not want the pin punch.
Yeah, it'll be all over the community.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, great. So we had a motion and a second. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Perfect, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to item G, uh, this is establishment of the Pelican Reserve Advisory Committee. About time we get one of those things started in Pelican.
I was, today is the first time I learned we didn't have one. I thought we had one all this time. Not aware of that.
Right?
So, Tony, do you want to-
What's the rule there? Ask for forgiveness instead of?
Tony, do you want to take this, you want me to take this one?
Well, we've been working, uh, you know, staff has been working, uh, Chelsea, myself and Laura, working with Mr. Geppert and Mr. Measy, and we're planning on having a conversation next week.
Put your mic on.
All right.
Put your mic on.
Yeah, it is, I need you closer, there we go.
Please, thank you.
Uh, in, in the last couple of weeks, Chelsea, Laura, myself, uh, Mr. Geppert, Mr. Maisy have had some meetings and drafted a proposed resolution outlining and establishing the committee, its functions, subcommittees, annual work groups, however you want to call them, and their functions and roles, as well as protocol and procedures for the committee and the subcommittee. And we're gonna have some further discussion next week with uh, Mr. Cirico and Mr. Rovner of the Pelican Reserve Community Association with regards to this. And so we're planning on being, and NPAC is November, September 8th, is that NPAC or they moved to PAC?
Uh, they didn't have a quorum for the 8th. We are looking at the 12th as of right now, but we don't have a set date as of right now for September.
And then we'll have a trap.
They may be tabled till October because they have some snowbirds that won't be back till then.
Okay, thank you. And then at that time, the idea, the concept is to have a proposed draft resolution in front of them, so that they can provide their input to the board.
So we wanted to put this in front of you guys, so you know that this has been, that we've been working on this for a month or so. And PPAC will be, has not had the opportunity to see this yet. But this again was given the opportunity for the board to see it and delegate this back to PPAC for them to provide input and comments for them to bring back at a future meeting.
So the action here is awareness for the board.
Yes.
In uh, in the effort that PPAC will review it, come back, and we will formally adopt it.
Well, and if you have any direction to give to PPAC, um, after your review of this item, that would help potentially guide them in, in direction.
And correct me if I'm wrong, I think what we talked about in our, our board advance was we're also establishing uh, basically a uh, a procedural document or an outline.
A template.
A template, or um, how committees that fall under the, the board's jurisdiction should operate moving forward.
How they function and operate, and then their subcommittees as well, and setting those requirements. That way it's consistent.
Does that-
Does Stony Brook have one of these?
Well, that's, I was gonna say-
That's, that's, that's the next one, is Stony Brook.
Uh, the next one is?
Well, not in the agenda packet, but-
But the next time, so we will evaluate-
Once this template is sort of established, that's the idea, then we go to Stony Brook's committee.
To exist, Stony Brook's existing, and then go from there, okay.
So, so Pelicans running the gauntlet.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, that's what happens when you go rogue for uh, just kidding. Okay, so that's just awareness item no action there. Moving on to item H, the RFQ uh, 22-01-AD, that's the district engineer services.
Yes, so uh, we negotiated with Tetra Tech. Ultimately, we're bringing back the final contract with their numbers associated. And per the budget for next fiscal year, under the general fund, there's $37,000. So this would be to approve the contract with Tetra Tech in that amount for fiscal year '23 and authorize the district manager to execute the contract documents, understanding that individual task authorizations that exceed the district manager's threshold would come back to the board for their approval. So this would set the district manager, the district engineer for a, for three years with two one-year renewals.
I'll go to discussion if we have a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second the discussion.
For discussion. Um, the one area that I think there's been improvement, but I would love to see it continue to progress, which I think is in line with what we've been talking about at staff, which is a little bit more oversight and structure around the project management. Both how we- Both how we, how we track projects, how we report out on them. Because I think that should feed into our much larger district PMO. So I know that normally Tetra Tech will assign a, a project manager or have someone that, you know, is either acting on that behalf or somewhere close to it. Can, did we address that at all? I know it probably doesn't have to be, it won't, doesn't necessarily have impact to language or the dollars, but I want to make sure that as we move forward, that we adopt that approach where we are looking at things in a little bit more detailed, structural, PMO-type environment, project for project, and then holistically across all projects.
Yes, so there is a, there will be, with Keith, starting next Tuesday, department director assigned to each of their individual projects that they'll be responsible for the oversight of. Laura and I will be keeping some of those projects at the admin level. The admin building is a perfect example, but there, there will be more accountability on both staff side and the engineer side.
Yeah, and I don't care what format we use, but at any given time, if a board member or staff wants to know where we're at, I want to see a project plan with tasks, items, target date, you know, if there's a, if that date has been changed, reason for, I mean, I want it to look like a project, which I'm sure you guys are probably doing.
Similar to what Scott provided to us.
Yeah, well, I.
Unless too much.
I want to be able to look at it multiple levels like you would, you know, whether it's Microsoft Project or anything. I want to be able to get in the weeds. I want to know, this task is dependent on this, who's the owner of that task? Just so, you know, not necessarily so much accountability, but just so we can maintain motion. So when something does stall, we know exactly why, we can justify it, and it'll help us keep on, on track. And I think there's, there's staff purpose for that, but from a board level, I just want to see things on a high level. I want to see a list of everything we've got going on from capital, from a O and M, and I want to see what projects we have, when they're scheduled, because a lot of that is sequencing. So we need to know what the sequence of these projects are at a very high level. And, you know, everything on there should be either approved, are we on task, are we on, you know, on budget from a delivery? So I just want us to get a little bit more of the details there because it'll help us manage if we have more information.
We're working on establishing a year-long oversight, like I said, with Keith starting and then establishing what the expectations are for the engineer and staff. We'll be able to, to make those adjustments and bring it back.
And, and just one last point, that because we always do a fiscal year, we will always get a couple of items that have a high priority that need to get done for either, well, items come through, we have to make a determination. What is the priority, what's the severity? And if it needs to get done within, within this fiscal year, we may not have budgeted for it. We're going to have to either move something or, something may have to ship. It's not uncommon for us to shift priorities during, during the year. It's difficult for us to do that when we don't know what we can move or what's on, in schedule because every year there's always something that doesn't get done. So if we have this master plan, it's easier for us to, hey, we can insert this because this project will probably fall over to next year because, you know, we rain or delay or permitting or something like that.
And we meet, I meet weekly with Tetra Tech and we reevaluate those priorities every single week.
And I would love for there, with Tetra Tech, for, for them to be able to, you know, continue to help us drive value engineering and, and those things. And let's celebrate that. When, when we're looking at something, if Tetra Tech can help us drive cost savings or be more efficient or anything, I want us to be able to maybe spend a little, little bit of time periodically to speak to that because I think it's important for the residents to know where are we, where are we driving efficiency? How are we optimizing and where, where those costs stays? Because we just don't tell that story enough. Okay, perfect. So I will call the vote. All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Any opposed? Perfect. Thank you very much. District manager items. Did I cover everything?
Oh, I just wanted to let everybody know that Randy has been doing most of the work, but he and I have been working really hard on the new website, making sure all the content is there. And fingers crossed, we'll be launching tomorrow.
So, and also with Granicus, this was our first dry run. This was supposed to be a light meeting, it didn't happen. But we are working through some of the kinks of this, so hyperlinks and, and so moving forward, our agenda and all accompanying agenda items in the packet will be on our website for the public to see. Whereas in the past, you had to make the request for the supporting items. So that provides a lot of transparency for the public and what staff's working on.
And then there's a widget right on the very front page. So when you go to GatewayDistrict.org, there's a little box and it shows Republican meetings, Stony Brook meetings, our meetings, and there's links to all the agendas and information right on the front page.
Yep.
So, and I, I do want to circle back to our achievements and recognition because I do want to recognize Randy. In the short amount of time he's been here, the, our posts that I've seen, just in Facebook alone, I mean, there's very informative posts that are coming out on a, on a systematic manner, everything from, remember to keep your lights on while you're biking, or, you know, pool reminders or whatever. So I think that, I mean, that I've seen a tremendous improvement in those areas. You know, have fun with some of the comments come along with it, but that's, that's part of the job. But I've seen, so make sure you give him a, a, a kudos from the board for, for the work that he's done thus far. And that's not even accounting the contract stuff, which is probably the, the bulk of what he does.
Yeah.
Where we'll see the impact, but the little stuff from a communication and PR perspective, I don't know if, if anyone in the, you know, in the audience has, has noticed the, the increased frequency of, of those updates. But if you, if you haven't, we should probably make sure that we're learning people where to go, you know, to see these types of things.
Also, we have the grand reopening of the pool scheduled for Monday, weather permitting. So 11 to 3, we're having a little party to celebrate with, we're having a food truck, snow cone tent, some raffles and giveaways. So there's that for Monday. It's a long weekend, so most people have it off, so please come join us at the pool. The pool passes will be issued over, at that time period. So I mean, a normal people, normal business, geez, I cannot get my words straight right now. Excuse me. Most of the time you have to come to the admin office to get your, your pool pass issued on that day. From 11 to 3, go to the pool and get a, a pool pass issued there. So that'll give a little bit of reprieve. And then as such, with the contract speaking to, we're working with Tony on addressing some insurance requirements and trying to alleviate that so we can get some vendors in here. Not, not eliminating it, but potentially reducing some of those just so we have pretty high requirements right now. So we're working through a lot of logistics with the contracts, getting the website up, getting Granicus up. There's a lot of programming that we're doing on the backend that hopefully you guys will see come to fruition here in the next month or so.
Yeah, I haven't seen the finished product, but it's, it's amazing what updated tiles will do for surrounding. It does, it looks pretty good. I can't wait to, can't wait to see it.
I just have two comments regarding the post. So if we could get Randy to actually post, because I had that under my comments, that they will be providing passes that day and that day only because it's not. And also if we can edit the post that we posted last month that says for passes, you have to come to this office.
Yes.
So I know we post, we placed one there, but we need to revise the one that we just placed.
He's listening in, so I'm sure he's taking that.
That's the only two things I have on that.
Anything further from staff?
Don't believe so.
Okay. Tony, did you have anything on your, for your updates?
Just briefly mentioned it when we talked about the Pelican Reserve Access Road. Charles Mann and I have furiously been going back and forth, and my eyes are cross-eyed from looking at legal descriptions. And so we have the deeds delivered today for, like I said, FPL easement over in Peace. We're expecting the product piece from Stephen Adams anytime soon. And then we also have the deed for West Links, that lake track in area nine. And then we'll handle the stragglers. We have some other little pieces to pick up.
There's, there might be, like we talked, some stragglers.
Yes, there's definitely some other parcels that we've identified that'll come subsequent.
Along that line, and I don't know if WCI was involved or how it happened. We were talking today Commerce Lakes Drive East. That used to be ours over to Daniel's Reserve. Well, the county came in and did the roundabout. All of a sudden, we now have nothing on Commerce Lakes Drive East. Was there, was it?
I don't know.
Understanding, I didn't, I wasn't aware of it. I didn't realize it.
Tony, per LEPA?
County now has it all the way to Daniel's. And that kind of surprised me. I didn't know that we agreed to that.
When we had the transaction involving the, the conveyance of roadway tracks, I'll go back and pull those.
That's one. And then the other one is, just to get an idea, you know, we're talking about timelines for the engineer. We'll have timelines for the attorney also. We have got to get an answer on these defunct associations and what we're going to do. Those things are a, just a nightmare setting out there. Come to find out, nobody's doing nothing on sidewalks, nobody's doing nothing on roads in Fairway Lakes Office Park. And there are, there are sidewalks over there that somebody's going to trip, somebody's going to fall, and somebody's going to get sued. And since there aren't any other pockets other than ours, you can just bet who's going to get it.
Well, you know, it's interesting you mention that because if you recall the eminent domain action that the county filed against the dissolved corporation for Fairway Lakes Office Park. Interestingly enough, the surviving officer at the time of dissolution, who we tried to get to execute a deed to the district, is, the entity has appeared through that individual and is saying that what the county offered, the six figures the county offered is not enough.
I saw it all.
I'm sorry?
I saw it all.
I forwarded that to you when I got that. We, district was named as a party initially because we had a utility lien for a utility service that wasn't paid, but that was released a long time ago, but I'm still getting all the pleadings. And again, we can come back to the board at the October meeting with the budget because if you recall, the process would be for the district to apply to the court for the appointment of a trustee, to have the trustee then execute the deed in favor of the district. The district wants to acquire or fee some ownership to those roadway tracks.
Well, I've, I've got a thought. Reading, when I go to read the statutes, it's, it's fun reading. As I read it, we have the authority to go out there and we could create a Worthington Assessment Area. We could create a West Links Business Park Assessment Area. We could create a Fairway Lakes Office Park Assessment Area. And we just basically go in, take over those, and they get their own special assessments, just like Town Lakes does now.
Yeah, it's correct. We have the ability to do that, and we also have the ability to exercise eminent domain, but that gets expensive.
My, my point on all of this is that you know and I know, because we've both been doing it for years, these people are ignoring us. I'm kind of surprised that Brian came out of the, out of the woodwork, but he did a pretty good job of taking pleading the fifth about 15 times, not answering the question. But we're not getting anywhere. But the, but we have the exposure. They aren't going to sue anybody over that office park. They're in any, it's, it's dead.
But we're not maintaining the road.
I'm sorry?
Correct.
My knowledge, we're not.
We are not maintaining the road.
I understand. We're not maintaining of it. Where is it at? In Gateway District.
Right, but that's.
We'll get sued.
But if somebody was to file a notice of claim, which was what the, this first step they would have to do, they, we would deny it and just sit there for six months. It constitutes a denial in the statute if they have a proper notice of claim.
One thing I want to do is pay more legal fees. I want to get this solved.
No, what I'm saying is, I, I think if somebody was to file a lawsuit, it'd be a motion to dismiss because we don't own the property. We have no interest in it. I think that'd be a difficult, we could file actually a judgment on the pleadings and get rid of the case quickly because on the face of it, we don't own that property.
So, let me, let me help.
Nobody wants to do anything.
So the, I think the point that you're trying to make, Mr. Tinkle, is that we are, as a district, we are aware of private properties within the district that are either roadways or rights of ways that are supposed to be maintained and operated by defunct property owners associations. Is it the interest of this board for us to pursue and try to acquire those via legal special warranty deed, quick claim deed, whatever legal term Tony wants to throw at it? Or do we leave them be and leave it amongst the private property?
The problem and the difference is, wearing my engineering hat here, is that in all of the other ones, let's say, for example, Gateway Greens, if we just said, we're not going to do this. The people that get impacted are the 1,400 homes in Gateway Greens. These are all areas that benefit people all over this county, all over the state, because they're commercial traffic. I mean, people going in to go eat at, let's say, the, what do you call it down there, the sushi place? So it's, it's, it benefits a lot more. So it is a public road, unlike our roads in our community that we have this, knowing people get burned or the people live there. This is a different deal. This is a commercial deal.
That is all commercial, from Danny Grant's office to Skinny Dogg. I mean, the sidewalks are like, like literally they're five inch, like the whole entire concrete is elevator on top of the other concrete. It's that.
So.
Yeah, I guess one, one approach might be is, because they are publicly used roads, but they're not public roads, is that to, less expensive route might be, get all the property owners in that area to again, join in on the covenants and reestablish a new entity and establish a new set of covenants which match the old set of covenants. And they would then be in the best position to.
And they're, and I've been talking to them over there. And they, they want, they want that recreated for, don't want it created for one reason. No money coming out of their pocket. They don't want to pay for it. They like it the way it is, and what they don't understand is status quo, in my opinion, is dangerous.
So does the board want us to pursue different options on trying to take over these properties? Or do we leave them?
I think staff should do their due diligence and look at any, any available options that gives us to, you know, to the endpoint. And, you know, whatever their, you know, and we'll figure out which one's most viable.
Yeah, and in that analysis would be the, I would suggest it would be working with Chelsea and Laura, the, and the engineer, pros and cons to the district as a whole. And pros and cons to the property owners and estimated cost. Because again, at the end of the day, you have, there's some cost associated with those property owners. They're the only ones specially benefit, or primarily benefiting from any improvement.
So is there consensus from the board for us to pursue those?
If that requires a motion, I'll make the motion. It's, it, I'm afraid we're going to get sued.
I think you got consensus from the board.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll work on that, put that on our radar and, and try to bring it back in a future meeting.
Anything else from you, Tony?
Uh, not sure, not sure there are any other questions.
Any comments for counsel? So just to what, the, those that are listening online or here, we are going to move into a closed-door session?
I think we indicated it was five o'clock. I have the court reporter coming. Sorry.
Oh, was it five? So we're going to.
You didn't realize how fast we just go.
That's correct.
Fly this with you out on the interstate.
One, just if I can, one last thing, Randy just messaged us. The RFP for the concessionaire for the soccer complex will, will be going out tomorrow, so everybody will be under the cone of silence. Please refer any and all questions or comments to Randy as our contracts manager for the district.
What, what, what are we doing?
RFP for concessionaire services for our concession stand.
For the park, for the leagues. So will we adjourn until five o'clock?
I'd say recess.
Recession. Okay, so we will recess until five o'clock. And at that time, just so you guys know, that's a closed-door session.
Well, we open in the public.
We open in the public, and then we go to a closed-door session, just so you know.
And then we open it again.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll say, so he's not here, let's just do whatever we want.
Yeah.
I didn't realize that. I thought, I didn't know it was time. I didn't know it was time.
This conference will now be recorded.
So we will reconvene from the earlier session. And at this time, we're going to commence an attorney-client session between the Board of Supervisors and the Gateway Service Community Development District and our attorneys. This session will be closed to members of the public under section 286.0118 of the Sunshine Law. A governmental body may meet in private with its chief executive officer and its attorneys to discuss certain matters related to pending litigation. Subject matter of the attorney-client session shall be confined to settlement negotiations or strategy sessions related to litigation expenditures concerning pending litigation to which the district is presently apart before a court-style Gateway Service District Community Development District versus Port Line Inc., DBA, Port Line Works, case number 22-C-A-000466, pending in the circuit court in and for the 20th Judicial Circuit, Lee County, Florida. The session will be recorded by a certified court reporter who is directed to record the times of the commencement and termination of the session, the names of all persons speaking, and all discussions and proceedings. Upon the conclusion of this litigation, a transcript of the session will be made a part of public record. The estimated length of the session is approximately one half hour, but may be terminated early or extended longer. The following persons will attend this closed session: Supervisor Doug Banks, Ed Tinkle, Flavia Walsh, and Chelsea O'Reilly, who's the district manager. As the district's chief administrative or executive officer, district counsel Anthony P. Pierce Jr. and Lenore T. Bakerfield, and a court reporter. But the record reflect that pursuant to the requirements of the Sunshine Law, notice has been given of the time and date of today's closed session, as well as the names of the participants as evidenced by a copy of the notice published on August 6, 2022 in the Fort Myers Press and was continued on the record to September.
Yeah, I would just say September 1st.
To September 1st, 2022. The time is now 4:52.
Chair opposing sessions to the public and before the full enough time, and I will go.